I have that it is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. I'm going to call to order the Granberry, City of Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. We are located at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. And I do want to remind everyone that you can watch the meeting live at www.granberry.org/live. You can also watch it later since you're live at this point right here in town. I don't see Reverend Travis, so I'm going to ask if our own city manager, Mr. Chris Kaufman, will lead us in prayer.
Y'all, please join me in prayer. Father God, we just come to you tonight, we just thank you for putting us in a great community where we're able to serve and to reach our fellow man and to take care of their needs and take care of them. Just thank you for the various groups in our community, Lord, that just step up, nonprofit groups, just step up all around us and take care of the needs of our citizens in ways we can't even begin to do as a city government. And we just thank you for those people. Thank you for those that are here tonight, that work behind the scenes, that do all these things for us, and this makes our community that much better. Just watch over tonight and give us wisdom as our council makes decisions. Give them a good clarity of mind and thank you for the professionalism that they display every time we gather. We just ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag and to the Texas Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, council. Appreciate that. We're going to have a couple of proclamations, and I will be having, reading a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and then a proclamation for Sexual Assault Month. I'll have the proclamations here, and we will go ahead and read those, then we will take the photos, and then we'll come back and have public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. By the way, there are no public hearings tonight, so if you have something that you want to speak about on the agenda item, please go ahead and see Carla over here and get signed up. Let's do these proclamations. Thank you. If the ladies and gentlemen representing the areas, let me just say, representing Mission Granberry, CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties, Plexi River Children's Advocacy Center, Kids Armor of Hope, Hood County Crimes Against Children Task Force, Hood County Sheriff's Department, and the Granberry Police Department, if you guys will come up, I will read this proclamation. Y'all don't want to get very close. Whereas children are the embodiment of dreams and aspirations for the future, and as such deserve to grow and develop in nurturing environments, free from fear and victimization; and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support it needs in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment; and whereas our society has a responsibility to protect our children and help them thrive in a safe environment, as every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect; and whereas throughout the community there are dedicated individuals and organizations such as Mission Granberry, CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties, Plexi River Children's Advocacy Center, Kids Armor of Hope, Hood County Crimes Against Children Task Force, Hood County Sheriff's Department, and the Granberry Police Department, who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and help parents obtain the assistance they need; and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, as Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2023, as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Granberry and urge all citizens to join in dedicating their energies to cherishing our children by helping them grow and develop free from victimization so they may mature into successful adults. Furthermore, I urge the community to join Mission Granberry and CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties by participating in Paint the Town Blue during the month of April by displaying a blue ribbon, light, or sponsoring a blue flag. Thank you, all of you. Let me have this proclamation here. Whereas sexual assault is a serious crime that touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender, identity, or socioeconomic status; and whereas the Granberry community recognizes and participates in a public awareness campaign to support National Sexual Assault Awareness Month; and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations such as Mission Granberry, who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims; and whereas preventing sexual assault means changing the social norms that condone violence and requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each wholeheartedly committed to transforming our community. Now, therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, sexual assault programs, and victim service providers, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim April, 2023, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to sexual assault and recognize the impact it has on our community. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Granberry, Texas, on the 21st day of March, 2023. Jim Jarrett, Mayor. So here...
We're applauding for these people up here. Amazing to have to talk all day and I just start reading these as hard as it is. Thank you, you two, for being able to speak and for what you did.
Point two, and ask the city council, city manager, if they have any statements of encouragement or recognition for our staff. Mr. Kaufman?
I got a couple of, a couple of things I'd like to mention. First off, I received notice on Friday that our finance department, and obviously the city management team, received an award for our budget again. So hats off to the finance department for a great job putting together our annual budget. I also like to tell you that we're also in the process of putting together the personal financial annual report, and you'll be able to see that. It's real easy to read. It's, it's much smaller and pages more colorful with, with charts and graphs and really easy to read for the normal person that doesn't read accounting terms. So just wanted to say thank you to the finance team for doing that. And then also, I want to tell you a little story that I heard about with the fire that occurred on the square. Our fire marshal slash inspector, Kevin Jones, was first person on the scene to respond to that fire. He had intimate knowledge of the fire sprinkler system that had been installed in that building, but was not yet activated, nor was the fire alarm activated at that time either. So the building was on fire for a little while, but as soon as he got there, he was able to hook up a hose to that structure that, that would charge that fire sprinkler system, and it helped save that building. I think that without his actions taken, that entire building would have burned to the ground. So that's how important the fire sprinkler system is, and I just can't encourage everybody enough to realize that and realize the importance of fire safety. And we're very fortunate, nobody was in that building, and we're, I guess we're still waiting to hear the outcome of what caused that fire. There's still an investigation going on, but we, you know, I talked to the lady that owns it the day of the fire, and, and she, she expressed to me the intent to rebuild it. So that's good news on both points. So I just wanted to report how Mr. Jones did a great job.
Thank you. Yeah. Others?
Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note regarding the Crockett Street. Just a terrific job by Rick Chester and the whole Public Works Department. Crockett looks absolutely great, opens the square up ahead of schedule, which is terrific, and opened up in time for the, for the Founder's Day Jubilee, which was important, and it's really done. There's a little bit of work to do tomorrow to finish the striping up, but ahead of schedule and a, and a great repair and a great job by our Public Works Department. So thank you all.
Anyone? Other? I too wanted to comment on the Crockett because I got there early Friday morning and I, was it Friday or Saturday morning it was ready?
Thursday evening.
Thursday evening. No wonder I wasn't first to get to drive on. I was saying, I got to drive on Crockett. Chris said, "Yeah, I did too. You didn't tell me it was the day before." But I also want to comment on the, just the staff that takes care of the wonderful events that we have almost every weekend. If you show up early in the morning, it's already clean, and it doesn't matter because they're there during the night to take care of everything. All the trash barrels get emptied, everything is ready for the thousands of citizens and the thousands of people that come down the next day. It just, it, I am tickled to death with it, but it just amazes me, the professionalism that they exhibit and the, and the lack of credit that they want or get. I mean, they come in, they get it done, they disappear. It's a, it's a wonderful feeling when you step out there early in the morning and see such a pristine city, and it is a pristine city. See, anyone else? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I just wanted to pass on a comment from a citizen on the same, same thing about the fire. He, he was, he came up to me and he just expressed that, you know, he was so proud of the Granberry volunteer firefighters. He said, "They volunteer." He's like, he was, he was, he could, he was bragging about them, and I just want to just, just pass that message along to be his voice on city council, just to pass that information. He said, "They, they stuck a arm," he didn't know what it was. He said, "They stuck some kind of machine in there, and they just started spraying inside of it and trying to reduce that fire." He's like, "Man, I saw it all." He's like, "Man, I'm proud of those guys." So I just wanted to express his excitement as well.
Yeah. Do you want to comment on the equipment that was there? You told me something about that equipment.
Well, we had our two ladder trucks there, and Crescent provided another ladder truck. So there were actually three ladder trucks on the scene. I saw two pumper's in the picture I looked at. And of course, our air and light machine was there that recharges, they provide light on scene, and it also has an air compressor system if they need to refill air tanks to make an inward attack. So fortunately, they didn't have to go in the building, it doesn't look like to me. But I was really impressed that, you know, we've made the investment over the last six or so years to buy enough equipment to be able to be successful in that battle that they were fighting. So you just look at the whole, I don't know if some of y'all saw those pictures, but if you look at those two, two ladder trucks blasting water into that building at the rate they were going, plus the pumper trucks, it's really incredible amount of water that was going, plus what was going through the sprinkler system early on to help contain it on the first floor like it did. So it's pretty neat.
Chris, can you, can you explain for the, can you explain to the audience that don't know what a ladder truck is and what its purpose versus a regular fire truck?
So a regular fire truck is what we call a pumper truck, and it's got, it's got pumps and hoses, and we, the firefighters typically hold those hoses and extinguish the fire, probably a four-inch hose or a two-and-a-half-inch hose, depending on what, what's going on. And they typically pump anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 gallons a minute. And the same thing with the ladder trucks, it goes up 105 feet, our new one. It costs about $1.2 million, this ladder truck, and obviously, we've, we've got it set up on the lease purchase payment plan, just like we do the, the new engine that we have, the, the pumper truck engine. So we've got new equipment, we've got old equipment. Our old ladder truck was on the scene and able to respond, and it was, it's from 1999, and we're going to have to replace it soon. So the, the investment that the city makes in equipment is substantial, even though we have a volunteer fire department. And we're very blessed to have the volunteer fire departments because they probably save us about $4 million a year in property taxes. And so that translates to about double what your property tax rate is now. So that gives you an appreciation for what those guys do for us financially. But more than financial, they're there responding in emergency situations, and that's huge. And so we provide the equipment, they provide the manpower, and we've got a great partnership. So they are a volunteer standalone agency. You can donate to them independently. You can give to the city, and we'll buy stuff for them as well, but they do have their own nonprofit status. Anything else, Mayor?
We had plenty of water pressure?
We had very good water pressure. We, we're proud of everything we've got. In fact, our water system is probably in the best shape it's been in in a long time. We've, we've actually got crews that go out and, and flow test fire hydrants and document that every year, and we maintain, we're, our minimum standard that we want is 1,000 gallons per minute for, per fire hydrant, but on any given scene you need, we'll pump 3,500 gallons per minute through multiple hydrants, and we're able to do that. So hats off to replacing, when we did the square, we did the square, the sidewalks and everything, we replaced the water lines, and some of those water lines were 80-plus years old, and so we're really proud that, that we're able to defeat that. I want to encourage the business owners, if they're listening or watching or get to hear this, really seriously consider a fire sprinkler system for your building. And if you're interested in doing something collaboratively with the city, like we talked about in the past, please reach out to us, reach out to me personally, and we will facilitate some meetings and figure out where to go and how we might be able to do something to protect the rest of the square. The worst thing that could happen in my mind is a building on the square catch on fire that doesn't have a fire sprinkler system, or maybe a attic fire or something in a vent of hood or something, and it causes the whole block to go away. So that would be terrible for us. So it's pretty important stuff.
It is, and I, I add to the, the infrastructure, the infrastructure being the fire trucks and all of this. These did not get purchased yesterday. This is the result of strategic and long-term planning that's been in the works, that gets, gets put on paper, this is what we're going to do, and then it gets done. And I'm very appreciative of the staff and this council that makes those things happen, and been making them for years. And now we're looking forward to what's the next five years going to bring, because it's, it's going to be here before we know it. So thank you. I thank all of you. We're going to move along to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. We have no public hearings, so Carla, do we have anyone who signed up to speak on agenda items? Okay, I see no one. I'll ask. Okay, we're going to move right along to number six, the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered under the Deliberation Agenda. Does council have any need to pull these? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 6.2.
You want to pull item 6.2? Others? We'll move 6.2 to the top of the list on the Deliberation Agenda, and I will ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, item 6.1, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of item 6.2.
Sound moved.
Ms. Burwell seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It's approved 6-0. Now let's go to item 6.2. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-27, amending Articles 1.50526 and Articles 1.50561 of the City of Granberry Code of Ordinances Fee Schedule. Mr. Rodriguez, did you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, Mayor, if, is there a representative for Waste Water, Waste Connections? If you, if you don't mind coming up to the podium and stating your full name, address for the council?
Yes, sir. Sean Dillon. District Manager for Waste Connections, and address is 350 Dennis Road, Weatherford, Texas, 76087.
The one question I had was on your, on the red line that we received was the container size, the roll-offs.
Yes, sir.
The 20, 30, and 40s. The, the whole point of this is to change the fee schedule to accommodate the inflation rate. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. It goes off CPI calculations, and it's, it comes straightforward from the contract of what the, what the language says.
Okay. So, and, and I'm also understanding that we, we benefit from that, some type of franchise fee, is that correct?
That is correct. You do receive a franchise fee as long as Waste Connections is the sole provider of roll-off or industrial construction-style disposal.
Okay. So kind of expand on that and...
Okay. So let's say that Waste Connections does not, well, all right, let me rephrase this. So in the contract, you can have, let me think, Sean's Roofing Service that has a dump trailer. You, that's fine. It's in the contract, you can have it. But when it comes down to Waste Connections, or let's say another third-party company, as in Frontier, Parker County Waste, Lone Star Disposal, any of those, you lose out on your franchise fee.
Okay. Tell, tell us how we lose out on that franchise fee.
Because we're not able to charge you that amount and return that money to you for your roads, your schools, however you decide in the general fund of the city to dispense that, the, the funds.
And how, how big is that franchise fee that we, that we get in return?
For residential and commercial, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Kaufman, I think it's 6%?
10.
10? Okay. 10% for each line of business.
Okay.
And it's residential, commercial, and industrial slash construction.
Gotcha. So the, the last question I have is that, you know, sometimes it's, it's hard to, to tell residents, hey, you know, we, we can support Waste Connections, but there's, there's always competitive, competitors out there. So having a competitive rate is sometimes what other people are looking at, and when you're, when you're increasing the price to, for instance, a 20 cubic yard from $4.75 to $5.07, and people are still charging $4.50 on a 20 cubic, how do you, how do we deal with that? I mean, how do we, you know, help Waste Connections in that effort?
Sure, and I, all right, so this is, this is going to be a, it's a hard thing to understand because we're, we're all for profit, no matter what company it is, correct? But we want to be able to include that franchise fee in the price that we have. So we want to pass that back to you guys, so you can have that for whatever you want to dispense it to. For us to increase that amount is hard, it's a hard choice we have to make, but we haven't seen these inflation rates since 1982. I mean, in all honesty, I mean, I was four years old, wanting my Mickey D's, you know, Happy Meal.
Right.
You know, so I mean, we have to, we have to do what we can, what we have to do to cover, I mean, we have an operational expense that, that inflated to 15% over the year. We have a disposal increase that happened for 8% over the year. We're only asking for 6.9 over the entire thing, but if you add the 15.9, the 15%, the 9%, and then the 6.9, I mean, we're, our 6.9 is, is minimal to the City of Granberry because we're so dedicated to you guys and the service that we provide.
Okay. That's all I wanted. I just wanted to let the council know that, you know, that we benefit from the franchise fees and how we benefit from those.
Sure. And, and, and you will benefit for, from it. We, we try to go through all the proper channels, and at some point in time, we, we just need some little bit of backup every now and then to make this happen.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait just a second, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah. Sean, talk to me about those roll-off containers. It sounds like we're not getting a franchise fee on, on those at this time. Is that what you're telling me?
No, no, sir, you are, but only for what's charged. So if, if, if a third party comes in and they're not authorized...
They're not. And how do we stop that?
So what we do right now is we go to those residents, whatever the address may be, and we put a notification on the box, we give a notification to the employer of that company, and then we wait, and it's 24 hours to 48 hours that they have to be removed. If they're not removed, we get with city code enforcement, and we talk to Robert, Rob...
Rob McCumber.
Yes, sir. And we talk to him, and he helps us negate that.
Okay.
Now after that, it's up to the city to help us remove those. That's literally all the authorization we have through the contract.
Yeah. Gotcha. So you're, you're actively doing that?
Yes, sir.
When you see the violation? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Anybody else?
No? Okay. Very good. So do I hear a motion to consider adopting ordinance number 23-27, amending Articles 1.50526 and Articles 1.50561 of the City of Granberry Code of Ordinances-fee Schedule?
Sound moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Wadley seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It's approved 6-0. Now we'll move to the Deliberation Agenda. Now, we'll move to the deliberation agenda. Consider adopting resolution number twenty-three dash oh-six requesting that the Texas House of Representatives designate Granberry, Texas as the celebration capital of Texas. Mr. Coffman?
Well, you're, we need to back up.
Oh, did I do?
Seven point one.
Oh, okay. Consider approving the purchase of permitting and licensing software for the City of Granberry from opengov.ink.
Thank you, Mayor. We're, we're excited about moving forward. As you know, we've been working hard to come up with, uh, better solutions to meet our developing community. And part of our overall goal, and we've been working on this for about two and a half years, trying to procure a software package that would facilitate all phases of development. And I'm stealing some of Kara's thunder, but I'm excited about it, so I've gotta talk, alright? So, what we're, what we're trying to do is, is from, from the cradle to the grave of a development project, have it where each staff member can see the process where it's at online. The, the developer can log on to the software itself and see where their project is hung up, if it's hung up with us, or if they're waiting for something for them to supply. And so, it's a great communication piece, great coordination tool. And we have, uh, benchmarked many to, to get to this point, to choose this one as our vendor. So, now I'll turn it over to Kara and to our representative from opengov.
Thank you, Chris.
Sorry, I forgot your name, sir.
This, this is Andrew Stout.
Andrew Stout.
Yes.
I had to stout, but...
Yes. And he's the executive director, uh, account executive, I'm sorry, with opengov. Um, I have just a few words I want to say. I'm just as excited as Chris is about this. Um, I'm, I'm really pleased to bring this forward for council consideration. Um, the software is proposed for development and permitting systems and activities. It's specific to the Development Review Committee, and that includes your three, um, three legs to the stool. The Public Works Building Inspections and Community Development Departments would, would be making use of this along with our partners. Um, and as Chris mentioned during the past few years, it's become all too obvious to staff and, and I'm sure our customers and others, um, that we need a system that supports all of those legs of the stool and that will give the city better services for the, not only the development, internal staff and, and our external customers. Um, right now, we have an outdated and unsupported software. It's limited in its functionality, um, and it only serves to the building, uh, department operations rather than serving all of those departments. Um, in recognition of that, the staff team, including Rick Crownover, Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director Chester Nolan, Building Official Jim Cook, Finance Director Ava Gregory, and IT Director Chris Collins, as well as their staff members, we all embarked to discover a software solution that's best suited to our city needs, including permitting, customer services, project tracking, reporting, and related work. It was determined that we needed an integrated system, that is, one with all elements of the development process being housed in one software system. Um, that's what we need to do, more effective and efficient work. Um, we looked at a variety of factors for the new software, and some of the key considerations were a comprehensive tool that can be used anywhere, including in the field. Um, something that's modern, has customer support, is transparent, and offers an informational dashboard feature, has an interactive customer portal where our customers can electronically submit their materials, and is a collaborative environment and one source place for information for all involved. The, um, potential si- systems that we did review included EnterGov, Civic Plus, Acela, as well as this opengov that's before you for consideration. Staff reached out directly to many other communities that actively use opengov, and they've received rave reviews from those communities. So, it was determined that opengov provides the best software suite that meets our needs and fosters economic growth and demonstrates excellent, excellent external as well as internal customer service. Um, further, opengov, um, provides ongoing support, and it has, uh, ability for staff to have twenty-four seven to all their knowledge center, which helps us to, to be more successful with online training and documentation regarding their solution. And we already have opengov solutions with our budgeting, reporting, procurement, as well as a transparency platform that's online. So, the product will be familiar for many staff members. The opengov staff are responsive, they're timely, and they're very helpful, knowledgeable, and their solutions and solu- services. With that, I'd like for Andrew to be able to give you a presentation. Thank you.
Before he's... Before he speaks, I just want y'all to know that normally, if it's in the budget and we're buying something, we put it on consent agenda. But this is such a big deal, we wanted y'all to know everything about it. This is huge. I can't tell you how important this is to the efficiency and moving forward with our reorganization in those departments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. And Kara said it, said it perfectly. So, I'm gonna briefly, uh, just provide some background. And for those of you who may have never heard of opengov before, even though we do work with the city, I want to provide some background on that as well, um, who we are as a company and, and what you're getting from that aspect. Um, and as Kara mentioned, we've been working with staff, Kara, Ava, Chris, and many others for a long time on this, well over eighteen months on this project. And you can see here other opengov team members that have been involved, uh, throughout this process. So, this is a, a project that we take very seriously at opengov, um, and a partnership that we take very seriously. We've had a long, uh, partnership with the City of Granberry. So, uh, this is a project that we have thoroughly gone through and developed a strategic plan in terms of implementing it and making sure it's successful. And just a little background on me, uh, as, as Kara mentioned, my name's Andrew Stout, and I have the pleasure of being an account executive with opengov. I'm local to Texas. I live right outside of Fort Worth in South Lake, Texas. And my brother lives five miles down the road from here in Granberry, uh, with his wife and his two daughters. One of them be my goddaughter. So, I'm, I'm out here all the time. Uh, this is a project that's close to home for me. Um, I worked in Granberry, uh, in the summers to earn extra money to pay off my, my student loans. So, uh, a big fan of, of the city, and seeing y'all's growth over the past ten years really, uh, has, has been incredible. So, uh, this is a solution that not only is gonna provide immediate value, but also long-term value for the city as y'all continue to grow and continue to get acclamations, uh, like, uh, best city to raise a family, best historic city, uh, Texas Music City, which I think is awesome as well. Um, so, this is, this is a solution that will be a long-term value for, for the City of Granberry. And, um, as Kara mentioned, um, again, this is just overarching current state and, and future state of how opengov aligns with the, the current system is not meeting the demands and definitely not meeting the expectations of customers who are doing business with the city. Uh, the expectations are growing from customers as they can order things online and get them within a couple hours to their home. They expect that same level of service when they're, when they're working with the City of Granberry. So, um, that's something that we want to make sure that all of the efforts from city staff are coming through, and, and y'all are having a great experience, as Mr. Coffman said, from those first interactions from the beginning, from the cradle all the way to the grave when individuals are getting those certificates issued out. Um, so, with that, that's exactly why, uh, staff went out to look for a more modern solution to provide that experience for customers and also optimize things on the backend for staff members to provide additional automation to save them time in their day-to-day so that way you're able to provide this level of service. And in terms of how opengov aligns, this is exactly what we do. We provide those modern, uh, solutions in terms of permitting, licensing, code enforcements across multiple departments, not just building, um, across all of your community development in order to, uh, provide that customer-facing portal and then also the backend portal for staff members as well. So, it's really a one-stop shop, uh, for customers and then also that backend portal for staff members. Um, in addition to that, as Kara mentioned, uh, we provide local resources and local support. I myself am in Texas, and then your customer success manager, Mary Beth Gunderson, is also here. Uh, Mary Beth lives in Grand Prairie, Texas, just down the road. Um, we've been onsite here several times here at the city. Uh, that, that's how we like to work. We, we try to do that as much as possible. Um, Zoom's great, uh, as well. We'll Zoom in executives that are across the country, but we try to be onsite here, um, to, to increase the collaboration and make sure we're maximizing our time. So, we have over sixty team members across the state of Texas, throughout the DFW area, Austin and Houston, and, and opengov as a company has over seven hundred, uh, staff members throughout the country. So, just a little background on opengov, uh, real, real quickly here, who we are, why we exist. So, opengov launched a little over twelve years ago, and our mission is to power more effective and accountable government. How we do this is by providing modern cloud-based solutions that are specifically designed for governments. That's the only space that we're in. All of our research and development goes to enhancing our products for our government customers. And in terms of, uh, building this long-term value for the city with opengov, we operate on an unlimited model, meaning y'all at the city can have unlimited users, unlimited usage, unlimited data on the platform, and all of the enhancement are, enhancements are included as well. So, the current situation that's happening where your system needs to be updated, and it's gonna be very expensive and time-consuming, that won't happen with opengov because the enhancements are included at no additional cost, and we release enhancements every quarter. So, that's the benefit of, uh, one of the benefits of having that cloud model. Um, we are based in the U.S. As I mentioned, over seven hundred employees across the country. And in terms of cloud hosting, uh, we're hosted on AWS, Amazon Web Services, which has set the standard for your net security and performance. A lot of our U.S. military, uh, operates on AWS. Um, we work with over sixteen hundred governments across the country. You can see some of our Texas-based customers there. Uh, the City of Bedford has, has been very collaborative in working with us during this time and, and working with the Granberry team in terms of, um, collaborating on how they're using the opengov permitting and licensing system. So, we like to connect our customers as much as possible to create that network. And, you know, they share ideas. Odds are, if there's a, if there's an issue at the City of Granberry, other governments have had that as well. So, we can be collaborative and connect folks together to, to help out in, in terms of solving those problems. You can see some of our, our, uh, common results there in deploying our permitting and licensing system. One I want to point out is the five times faster, uh, application processing time. So, again, adding that automation, things that you get in, in normal tools that you're using, uh, modern tools, that, that automation is going to help staff in terms of getting their job done more efficiently. It's also gonna provide a lot of value to customers because they're gonna be able to get permits and inspection is done a lot faster, which obviously they're gonna, they're gonna appreciate very much. So, um, a couple of unique things to opengov. First off, we have a lot of government experience on staff from former government professionals. So, they're here to be a resource to provide guidance, to make sure everyone's successful, and, um, also to bridge that gap between software and government roles and responsibilities because government's very nuanced. So, these are folks that have, that have walked in, uh, government, uh, staff member shoes before. They understand the goals and initiatives. And, uh, all, all the solutions, everything we're talking about here today is built from the ground up. It is built for government, it is built by government professionals, and it's also supported by government professionals as well, so long-term. Um, a few other unique things with opengov, um, and as, as we've seen throughout the demonstrations and working with your staff, the entire system is designed to be very easy to use. That's the goal of it. You can have the best system in the world, but if it's difficult to use, i- it's essentially a paperweight at that point. So, the system as a whole is designed to be very simple to use. We handle all of the training at opengov. So, as you have new staff members that come on board, we train them and get them up and running on the system, which is really important for, for an enterprise-level software to standardize that process. The biggest threat right now to governments is turnover. Um, a- as we're seeing, just like the City of Austin, there are seventeen percent vacancy rate right now, um, and having issues actually delivering services to their city. Uh, and, and with that, when an individual leaves, all that intellectual capital goes with them. So, you, having those systems and processes that survive at the city is extremely important, and that's exactly what you have here at opengov. And it's a very easy-to-use solution that's very robust in its capabilities. So, we'll get folks trained up on it, and they're able to leverage this, um, and get going, uh, much faster than, than, uh, other systems out there. Um, a couple of other unique things, just pointing out, as Kara mentioned, that they evaluated several, uh, other solutions here. Um, really boiling it down, what makes opengov unique is first off, it's specific to government. This isn't a system that was configured and molded to fit government functionality because that creates a whole host of problems. This is something that was built from the ground up specifically for government. Um, also with opengov, the updates are included versus having expensive, time-consuming updates that, that take a lot of resources. Um, we're also able to deploy a lot faster than others in the industry. Our typical deployment time is about six months versus eighteen to twenty-four months, which is what you see with others. Um, and then finally, operating on that unlimited model. So, uh, having unlimited users gives you the ability to really, uh, unify all the departments at the city and then also include external contractors, things like that, who work with the city. We can give them temporary access to the system, making it much more flexible to use, um, not only today, but also for the long-term as well, um, as y'all continue to grow. Um, another thing I want to point out here is, with opengov, we integrate with over two hundred systems. So, y'all at the city have already invested in a lot of other technologies. Your current solution does not integrate with them, and, and that's a, that's a big issue. So, um, it causes a lot of bottlenecks, there's a lot of manual processes. So, with opengov, we're gonna integrate with those solutions that you've already invested in, maximizing those investments, and then also helping the data transfer, uh, transfer much smoother. Um, a- and you're able to collect that data, analyze it. It's gonna flow into your reporting and transparency dashboard, so you'll, you'll be able to get that from a council level as well to leverage in your decision-making. Um, also, in terms of pricing, I wanted to point out, um, considering that y'all already work, uh, with opengov, that was factored in, uh, to the pricing. We, we provided a very, uh, significant discount, uh, putting our best foot forward with this partnership. Again, we know this is a big investment for the city, and, um, we take it very seriously, and, and that's reflective in the pricing. Alright, so showing this, um, overarching thing here, this is the entire, um, opengov ERP cloud. Um, we can deploy this in phases, as y'all are well aware, because you use the budgeting and planning, the procurement suite, and the reporting and transparency platform. So, our discussion is revolving around the permitting and licensing suite, which you can see, uh, with the Granberry logo over top there. Um, again, with the integrations, this is gonna integrate with your reporting and transparency platform that your staff already, uh, leverages today. So, um, the data will be flowing into there as well. So, with this solution, this is a high-level workflow map. Uh, again, that, that, uh, cradle-to-grave with the customer. So, it's gonna be the first thing customers go to, and they're able to submit for their application. It's then gonna route to the right locations for approval, and also gives the ability for customers to track where their application is in the process. So, that's great for visibility for the customer. It's also great for staff because it's gonna reduce call-ins for your staff, which is really important. So, it'll route around for approval, and then go into, uh, the document management backend. Y'all use a document management software here called Laserfish, and we integrate with that. So, um, w- we'll be integrating into that document management system. Uh, you're then able to go out and schedule your appointments, and as Kara mentioned, we have a great mobile app that inspectors are able to leverage in the field for their inspections, um, making, making their workflow a lot smoother. And then finally, issuing out those, the certificates, um, to the customer, doing this all digitally and all in real-time. And, and that's really a big key here is, is having, um, that real-time, uh, bi-directional communication with the customer. So, let's say an inspector goes out doing an inspection, maybe he notices, oh, we gotta get Kevin over here because we have to do a fire inspection, and the customer actually didn't register for that. He can mark for a fire inspection in real-time, the customer will get notified, Kevin will get notified, he'll be able to book his time when he has to be onsite to carry out that inspection, and everything is happening in the backend, saving your staff possibly a couple meetings, uh, several phone calls, several emails, and getting things done for the customer a lot faster. And this is the mobile app I mentioned here before. One thing I wanted to point out is, um, your staff members already have iPads, so this is familiar to them. This is gonna save them a lot of time, too, because they're just taking pictures onsite and then driving back to the office to import those pictures into the system. Uh, with this, using the iPad, all the information is gonna be sent to the opengov cloud, which then hits home base, and it's all gonna happen in real-time. And if they're in an area where they don't have, uh, cell service or something like that, maybe they're in a metal, metal building and they're offline, they're able to still carry out that inspection. And then when they walk back to their vehicle, they get, uh, cell service again. All that information will shoot up to the cloud and then instantly go back to home base. Um, lastly, just wanted to touch on here, our, our deployment methodology. Um, again, we've, we've gone through with the staff and developed a strategic statement of work and, and project timeline and how we're gonna deploy this. One thing I wanted to point out here, and it's something that's unique to opengov and how we deploy things, is that, that validation stage. So, this is the time period where, um, we've built everything out with your team members, collaborated together. They then test the system. So, this is the user acceptance period where they say, yep, this looks good, or, or maybe there's some issues. Hey, this isn't working how we want it to work. Can we go back and reconfigure things? So, we'll go back to the drawing board, reconfigure things, and then go back to validate it with the users and make sure it's, it's meeting their expectations. And again, all this is included, it's just to show how, how our methodology works, and that validation step is extremely important to make sure that we are meeting expectations and, and deploying things successfully. Um, so, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. We're really excited about this, uh, project, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to, to grow our partnership as well.
Questions, council?
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Burwell.
Thank you. I appreciate this, the presentation. I think it's not only gonna save the city itself employees some time, but it's gonna save us some time as well, because we actually do get phone calls, um, regarding the process. And I think this is gonna be extremely efficient. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Vale?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, also, a, a great tool, um, I think, as, as Rick kinda pulls that department together as, as, as you said in your presentation, which I've heard Chris say before, it's a one-stop shop. Uh, very integrated, um, you know, obviously, some, some training has to go on because we've got some people that are gonna be, you know, having their hands on this that are not part of the current use that we have with, with, uh, opengov. Uh, have we identified our project manager?
Yeah, yes, sir. So, we have the project manager identified. Kara is gonna be very involved in this, uh, just as staff members that she's allocated. Kira is going to be very involved in this, just as staff members that she's allocated. One thing I, I forgot to mention in the presentation, we are doing a three-day onsite training. That's a very good point. You want to make sure that we're there answering questions in real-time to ensure the, the solution's adopted.
Okay, and it looks like we're about five months out from putting it actually into, into, into work, right? Okay, so that's the implementation date?
Rough, rough timeline. We're going to have pieces of it that go live faster than others, so it'll be, we'll have a piece of it going live. The goal is to have some piece of it live in August.
Well, great tool. I think this is something, obviously, that, in my opinion, we've needed, and I think even more so now, as, you know, we've created this one-stop-shop, and I think this, this really can go a long way in helping our employees and the department, and, and obviously providing the kind of customer service that we all, you know, expect to provide back to our customers. So, great program and great presentation, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah. One question, you mentioned that you're based in the U.S. Do you do any processing or off, off-site process, or offshore processing or hosting?
No, sir, all of our hosting's in the, in the United States.
Great, thank you. Other questions, any? Yes, Mr. Bell?
I just want to echo what they said. In the four and a half years I've been up here, I've heard the single, the single issue I've heard more than any other is about the, the process of, of having projects completed, inspected, just the whole thing, and, and we've had numerous discussions about this, and to have this all tied together now, just, I'm, I'm real excited about it also, I appreciate you being here, and great presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Are you volunteering to work with this program? Great, great. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, I must say, consider approving the purchase and permitting, permitting and licensing software for the city of Granberry from opengov.in. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wildly makes a motion.
Second.
Ms. Burwell seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye. It passes six and, all opposed say nay. There were no nays, it passes six and oh. Thank you, Mr. Stout, appreciate it. Thank you, Kira.
Thank y'all.
Now, we'll move to 7.2. Consider adopting resolution number 23-06 requesting that the Texas House of Representatives designate Granberry, Texas as the celebration capital of Texas.
So, Tammy and crew have been working hard on this, I'll turn it over to her to share the excitement. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. Visit Granberry is excited and thrilled to come before you today and ask you to adopt a resolution requesting the Texas House of Representatives designate Granberry, Texas as the official celebration capital of Texas. If approved, the resolution will be sent to Representative Shelby Slossin's office to begin the official legislative process, which makes this official. As you know, Granberry is a city which hosts almost constant celebrations like last weekend. There are so many reasons that we celebrate. We celebrate our rich history, our patriotism, our arts, culture, music, our culinary and wine, our nature and recreation, our many festivals, our lake and all the lake activities, and having been named the best historic small town in America. Visitors come to Granberry year-round to celebrate everything. We celebrate girlfriend weekends, we celebrate family reunions, we celebrate numerous weddings, conventions, car shows, just to name a few. Tourism is our top industry, and for that, Visit Granberry celebrates. This place designation would not only be an honor for the city of Granberry, but an invaluable marketing opportunity to promote our brand and who we really are in Granberry. I respectfully ask that you pass this resolution so we may start on the road to this exciting celebratory designation. I'd also like to answer any questions that you have. I would also like to add that this all began last August when we realized that Granberry did not have an official place designation. There are 89 cities right now that have this designation, and it's very entertaining to see the, the different designations that are out there. But what is particularly great about this is it gives us a lot of marketing opportunities, whereas all of the place designations are great, but if you are, are something like the pecan capital, or the pickle capital, or something like that, it limits your scope of what you can do. In Granberry, we, we really are about celebrations, and some of the top place designations are cities like the wedding capital of Texas, which is Dripping Springs, and they're known across the country for that, and people come and do their weddings there just because they need to be in the wedding capital of Texas. Same with the getaway capital of Texas is Wimberly, and that was actually one of our top suggestions, but it's already taken. And there's a vetting process, and we cannot have another designation that another city has. I think some of my favorite designations are Grapevine is the Christmas capital of Texas, and they have marketed that to a level that's unprecedented. And then McAllen, which really wrote the book on tourism, and they are the South Pole of Texas. And, you know, it's, it's important to be creative, and it's important not to limit yourself in your marketing. I think the best historic small town, along with where history, Texas history lives, are amazing, and we promote that, but we are more than just history. And so, we've been working on a campaign specifically, small town, big celebrations, and that's just a tease for what's to come, and this puts us right in there to keep that going. So, small towns, big celebrations, small towns, big attractions, small towns, big restaurants. So, stay tuned for that, but, and I'm happy to answer any questions, because I could talk about this all night. I'm staying focused, I have notes.
Counsel, do you dare?
Mr. Mayor, not, not, not a question, just, just a couple of comments. I was at the brainstorming session, I forget what, what Friday it was, but it was after Rising Grind. Lots of good ideas. I mean, we had, Rihanna was making all kinds of notes on the board with all sorts of ideas that, that came forward from the group that was there. And as Tammy said, I mean, we've got a lot of events here, a lot of festivals, family gatherings, weddings, you know, girls' night out, maybe a, maybe a guys' night out, just an idea. And just, she did a great job of facilitating, you know, the group, and, and the group really, you know, made the decision, and there was some voting along the way in the top three, and then eventually, you know, decided on, on celebration. It was a unanimous vote by the group that was there, so. And as she said, I really think this provides Tammy and her team with a great, great marketing tool for the city, and, and to continue the great job that she and her team do to invite our guests into our amazing city and give them a little taste of what we all know about. So, terrific job, Tammy.
Thank you.
Other, other comments? Tammy, I, we heard about this, like you said, last August, I had no idea how you were going to pull it off, but you guys have done just a outstanding job. When you, when this, you know, when you present, it was like, wow, where did this come from? It was great. So, no other comments? I will ask for a motion, consider adopting resolution number 23-06 requesting that the Texas House of Representatives designate Granberry, Texas as the celebration capital of Texas. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution 2306 as presented, the celebration capital of state of Texas.
Here a second?
Second.
Greg has seconded, so all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. I believe this is approved six and oh. Thank you. Great. Yeah, yeah, go celebrate. To discuss and consider adopting resolution number 23-07 establishing the city of Granberry City Council priorities for the 88th legislative session. This is Texas legislation, 88th legislation, legislative session. Ms. Burwell.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have spent the better part of the weekend looking over nearly 300 out of the 8,000 bills that have already been proposed in the state legislature that are directly related to cities, small cities, and this is, does not include the companion bills that typically follow with these, or are in conjunction. I'm looking forward to discussing some of these with our representatives. I'm excited about doing that. I'm happy that we're doing that at this juncture, and I, I'm pleased that we're looking at working on these in a more refined way as a council. And I, I looked at the, the sort of the platform that Chris gave us that we might communicate to our legislators. My concern is this, we've already made history with the amount of bills just in the regular session that have been presented, and there's a great, great deal of detailed information in both the proposal for the position that we want to take and in the bills that pertain to cities, and I think that would be, we would be doing a disservice to ourselves and to the community if we don't take a little bit more time than what we do this evening. And I'll just go ahead and ask that we, I would like to make a motion that we table this, and for a date definite, and consider doing a workshop on this. I just think that we need to spend a lot more time on this than what we have designated for this evening.
So, you would like to postpone to a date definite?
Correct.
For a workshop? That would be one proposal, or did you want to go ahead and make an announcement before, or a motion before others? Anybody else have, want to speak? Mr. Kaufman?
I have a suggestion. Yeah, pick a date, but let's, let's just have it as a meeting so you can adopt a resolution at that meeting as well, if possible, because at a workshop, you take no action. But in order to do that, we need a quorum there to vote, so I believe we require a quorum anyway, but, you know, you can get up and leave during a workshop and still be able to call a meeting, so we need, that's just an idea that I had. And then I, I would propose Monday, the 27th, if that works for y'all.
Next Monday?
Yes.
Tom?
At time, what time?
In the evening is probably best for everybody.
I think so.
Would, would six be adequate?
Yeah. There's no other meeting here?
Nope.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
You know, the, the one thing I, I say is that, you know, this would benefit us, but we also need to think about how it's going to impact, like, the county, the appraisal board, or the appraisal board district. So, I, I would even go as far as opening it up to them, the, the other entities and seeing if they, I, I think we need to think about that, but opening it up and expanding the audience on that, but I don't want it to get to a point where it gets out of control, or so to speak, but there's a lot of these that you, you're right. Appraisal, the property tax, I mean, that affects all three entities. So, I, I don't know what your thoughts about that, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
So, I would agree with that, except that we're sort of on a timeline right now. We have a lot of these bills that are already, have gone, have been read and gone to committee. So, if, if any of us is, has the ability to go to Austin and discuss these after we've determined our platform, that really cuts our timeline. It's, it's difficult to get that time together with the county traditionally, and I think that we probably ought to do this at a city level, and then, in addition to that, discuss maybe with the county at another time, getting together, but with a sense of urgency, I think that we probably should work on this right now as a city. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah. Hey, Trish, what, what about this idea that we direct staff to reach out to the different entities and see if they have any inputs before a certain deadline that we establish? Or Chris?
I might just add that you may not have support from all the other elected officials on the priorities that you see best for the city. In particular, the House Bill 2167 that makes it where we won't be able to rely on TML to represent us, there's a elected official in the county that's pretty supportive of that bill, and so I think that you may be inviting a conflict you don't intend to have, but you may not. We'll find out tomorrow at our other meeting that we have, see how that goes.
I'm never opposed to working with the county on anything, but this particularly, like I said, the 300 bills just in relation to the county. I mean, I'm sorry, to the city. So, we need to really hone in and understand, there's some, a little bit of math that I did, and in the last session of the 11,000 bills that were presented in 2021, 38% of those, that was three sessions, there were two additional sessions, but 38% of them were passed. So, we need to consider that even if we only are looking at the roughly 300 that are directly related to the city, there's probably about 100 of those that could pass. They may not, they may be stuck to the next session or whatnot, but if we're going to address these, I think we need to do it in a timely manner, and we probably need to focus on the city at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bell.
Yeah, I concur. I mean, I, I think, you know, this, this group has responsibility for representing the city of Texas, or city of Granberry, excuse me. So, I think, you know, it's incumbent on us to go through the House bills and, and really understand how it impacts the city, how it impacts our community that, that resides in the city. Perhaps the county might do the same thing, and, and I'm sure there's some House bills that probably overlap as well, so we may be, we may be trying to accomplish something for the city that may have applicability for the, for the county as well. And if we do it in a meeting, Chris, I would assume that that would also have public comment, is that true? Okay, so, yeah, so, we may have some people come and express, you know, if they've had an opportunity to go through and something that they're interested in or passionate about, they may express their comments on that as well, and that would be good input back for the city in terms of how we look at things, and we, maybe something we didn't even think about or look at, given the, given the number as, as Trish just pointed out, but I think our first and foremost responsibility is to the city of Granberry and the, and our citizens. Thanks.
Other comments? Yes, Mr. Corrigan?
We can do it next Monday, but I, if I can make it, it won't be until much later in the evening.
6:15?
No, like closer to eight.
Well, we have, is everybody else available at that time? We'll sub a quorum, right? So, you can come when you're able to, yeah?
Are we looking at next week?
Correct, the 27th.
It's coming Monday, the 27th, 6:00 P.M. Here. We would have to post it, like you said, it would be a public meeting with public speaking available, what's on the budget, or what's on the agenda.
Does that work, Eddie?
Just looking at Eddie, you can or cannot?
I already got something scheduled on that. I mean, I, obviously, I can, I can, not obviously for y'all, but I can shift it, or I can miss the other meeting, but I'd, I'd rather not. But how does Tuesday of next week look for everybody? I'm not too sure. I mean, let's all get our calendars out and.
There's a ZBA meeting possibly, let me. Is there a ZBA meeting next week? No ZBA, so we can meet on Tuesday.
Greg, do you?
Tuesday works for everybody?
Tuesday, Tuesday, the 28th, does that work?
Yeah, Greg is on board, I'm on board, and.
Be here.
Okay, Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Okay.
So, Mayor, I'll amend my motion, I'll retract the one that I made and amend it to, table this to March 20, what is that, the 27th?
28.
28, okay, as a meeting as opposed to a workshop.
Okay, I think we just postpone it.
6:00.
It would be a motion postponed definitely to a special meeting on Monday, March 28th.
Okay, so we're postponing, we're postponing this def, to a time definite, next Tuesday, March 28th, at 6:00 P.M. Correct?
Postponed definitely to March 28th, to special meeting, March 28th, 2023, 6:00 P.M. In Granberry City Hall. That ought to get it. So, do I hear a motion to postpone definitely to a special meeting, March 28th, 2023, at 6:00 P.M. in Granberry City Hall?
That's, that was my motion, sir.
Ms. Burwell's made a motion?
Second.
Mr. Wildly seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. That passes six and oh, and we will schedule a special meeting.
I'd like to add something if could, Mayor. Eddie is our representative on the appraisal district board, and so the. And so the, the, the draft that I put together does not include anything concerning to the appraisal district. So I'm going to try to work with him between now and then and and see what ticks with the appraisal district and try to include some of that wording for us in our policy. Again, it's a philosophical document, it's not addressing individual bills. But if we see a bill that that embraces our philosophy, we can support it. And if we see one that doesn't, we can make suggestions on how it could be changed to where it does meet our philosophy. So that way, we're not in a conflict mode the whole time of what we're trying to adopt here. We're, we're simply focusing on, on policy, philosophy of conservative, whatever you want to be, and and make sure that those bills are representative of this body. So that's, that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. I now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five-five-one-oh-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will discuss projects canoe, green salsa, Omaha, wheels up, and T-bone. Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, the Opera House lease with the Granberry Theater Company. And section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, personnel matters with city attorney. We are now in closed session. Thank you. I now declare that the Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed sess, session, and all council members are present. There being no, is there any further business?
Mr. Mayor.
Nay. Ms. Burwell.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement regarding Qui Ling versus the city of Granberry.
Second.
Motion has been made, motion has been seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it passes six and oh. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Burwell.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for legal service with the Hyde Law Firm and Jeremy Sorrell.
Second.
I have a motion. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? No other discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it passes six and oh. Is there any other business? There being no further business, I, I pronounce this meeting adjourned.